Not yet.
There we go. We got our fourth board member, so we're good.
There's Mr. Rich.
Hey, Rich.
Hi, everybody.
Okay, we are live on YouTube and recording and we're all good, so.
All right, we'll just give another two minutes. I had to put on my glasses to see what time it was. Richard, did you hear from Howard or anything? Is he?
I did not.
Okay, well, I assume he's gonna be here then. He usually is.
Okay.
All right, well, I've got 6:29. I'll get another minute and we will get started. All right, well, I've got 6:30, so let's go ahead and get started. Hopefully, our other board members will join here soon. So I'll start off with a roll call. Tony Beardsley.
Nate Price.
Kara Riley.
Jeff Honeycutt.
Richard Burrows.
All right, well, we've got a quorum. We've got four board members. We have a quorum. The next thing is pledge of allegiance. So wherever your flag is, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Kinda hard to do that all in unison, isn't it? All right, all right, so next, we've got no comments from the public, correct, Vic? Nobody signed up to speak?
Correct, sir.
All right, then we'll move on to consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at last, the board meetings, the notes from the last board meeting and the enrollments? Anybody have any questions, comments? Jeff, Nate, I have a question for you guys. Did y'all have a financial meeting last night?
Yes, we did.
Anything we need to know about?
I don't believe so. It was a good meeting. It was pretty much everything was looking on the up and up financially. It was mostly good news reported.
That's great. That's always good to hear. All right. So does anybody have any comments, questions around the consent agenda, the financials, or the enrollment report? If we are good, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So may.
Second.
I've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion passed. All right, so let's start with our district reports. Rich, why don't you get us started here?
Thanks, Tony. So I'm sort of the circus entertainment here, just giving a kind of a brief overview that will help to prompt all of the district personnel for their reports that follow. So we are hoping that spring has arrived. I'm so looking forward to the next tornado. Student testing is underway. COVID vaccinations are up. I hope to hear from Katie about that. Graduation and prom plans are underway. Yes, in fact, we're going to have a graduating class. An end of year arts celebration has been proposed and we're working on that. This year's COVID relief money is nearly expended and next year's COVID relief funding has been preliminarily budgeted. And there's yet again even a third year, not called EASR yet, I guess it's called EAN, that we're looking at for putting together a budget for 2022. We have a new data information manager, Sheila Rife, who's in the district office, who's managing Medicaid, RMAC, and child nutrition reimbursements. And I'm feeling like we have a good team in place to do the things that we need to do and sort of commenting on something that Bonnie Colville said at the finance committee. We've actually fundraised about $100,000 just by being more careful in how we manage the information that goes out and comes back in. So I think we have about 100,000 new dollars that came to the district because we kept up with our promise to file for the reimbursement. So that's my report.
All right.
Hey, one quick question from here on that. When we're talking about testing for students, are the expectations, maybe this is unfair, but I guess I don't know how else to ask it, are the expectations the same that we've had in years past as far as benchmarking against other schools and ourselves, given just how wildly different the last year, year and a half have been?
You know, that's a great question. So I'll defer to Heather, who is the testing maven for the district. She's in charge of all things that have to do with tests. And today was actually the ACT testing. So Heather, do you want to comment on that?
Um, as far as we have been told, Mr. Honeycutt, those benchmarks do remain the same, that the state will be looking at us and holding every school to the same level of accountability that they have in the past and comparing us similarly. We'll see if that holds up after testing results. I know that the expectation is that every student for ACT Aspire will on campus regardless of what their learning option is. We're not given the option of giving it virtually. We can give it after school and on weekends, but every student is expected to be on campus to take it and we're expected to test no fewer than 95% of our students, preferably higher.
That's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, see how it really turns out, yeah.
That's for sure. The skeptical part of me wonders, that's for sure. But, you know, so be it. Those are the.
One question, Heather. Will the students, will we be allowed to test students off campus?
If an adminis, if a licensed school person is giving it, but it can't be like at a home, it has
Correct.
At a third-party site or on a school campus, and we'd have to go through the security rigmarole for that if it's at another part, at another campus.
Another location, yes.
Facility. Thank you for that word.
All right, well, see, Howard has joined us. I forwarded him the link, so he's using my name, so there's two of us on here. Howard, if you right-click on the name, you can change it. So if you want, you can, you can still be me. I'm fine with that, too. All right, so thanks for joining us, Howard. All right, so next, we've got Debbie giving us the child nutrition report.
I just wanted to make one quick comment about the enrollment report. We do have commitments from 1,212 families or students to start in August, so that's really exciting. As far as cycle reporting, there's no cycle report in March, so we, our next one will be cycle six in April. Child nutrition is going very well. Our steamer for the elementary has arrived and installed and it's working well. So that was a real plus, being able to find that at a discount price. We ended February with a negative balance of about $13,000 and change. Our reimbursement for January showed up on March 2nd in the amount of about $32,600. I submitted our claim for February today and expect they're getting caught up in getting our refunds or more quickly, excuse me. And even after we pay our February bills, we'll end with a balance of $24,862. So that's a real plus.
Yes.
At one point, child nutrition was three months behind reimbursing us, so that's why we went into the negative. We will be preparing take-home meal packs for our AAA students to be distributed on Monday, March 15th, for the break, for the virtual break. And then we are, will offer pre-ordered meal packs on March 22nd, not only for our AAA families, but also for excuse me, I lost my place, not only for our own families, but for local families as well. This is an exciting opportunity to be able to reach out to our neighbors in the community and introduce them to AAA. And supporting, it also supports our child nutrition program by bumping our meal counts, which increases our reimbursement. I just want to give a real shout out to Ariel Smith. She's the woman that manages our kitchens and orders the food. She works for Airmark and she just does an exceptional job. She's always looking for opportunities to increase our, our income and just offer new things for the students. And I hear the slushy machine at the high school is a big hit. That's all I have today.
So I just want to say, thank you, Debbie, for all that good work. But what's really important about this is that the Arkansas Arts Academy is really a neighborhood supporter in that it doesn't cost us anything to make sure that our free and reduced lunch neighbors who are not part of AAA receive the kinds of nutritional support that they need. And in no case would I would ever want any of our neighbors to not have the food that they deserve. It doesn't cost us any money. It's really just a matter of organizing this on behalf of the community. It, it, it says to everybody, we're here to be part of what goes on in Rogers, Arkansas.
So Debbie, how do we let the neighbors know that this is available for them?
We're gonna be releasing it through social media and flyers to local gathering spots like the Rogers Activity Center and things like that, as well as maybe local preschools. And actually, we can serve anybody from infant up, well, probably not infant, but up to 18 years old. And we're gonna work to have, I'm gonna work with Ariel to see if we can do like bag lunches, so people don't have to come onto campus, just giving us some more barriers for COVID.
Yeah, okay, well, that's great. That, that makes me proud that we're doing that. That's what we should be doing. All right, so looks like next is our COVID status.
Yeah, so our COVID report currently is a district, we have fewer than five active cases in isolation, and we have no staff or students in quarantine right now. Our vaccine update, 84% of the staff in our district expressed interest in receiving a COVID-19 vaccine. To date, 59% of all staff have received at least one dose of a vaccine and 49% are considered fully vaccinated. That's all I have.
That's great, though. We're getting there.
Yeah.
All right.
Aaron had his shot today.
All right.
We're now 60. Yay.
Yay.
So which one did you get, Aaron? Just curious.
Pfizer.
Okay, all right, cool. All right.
I had one thing I wanted to say.
Yes, Karen.
Hi, so I had asked Richard and I, we'd all, I think, received the email asking about what we were gonna do with masking after the mask mandate expired. So I thought it might be a good idea for Richard to go ahead and say that publicly during the meeting, what the plan is.
Sure, and really gratefully, we got a great email from Ivy Pfeiffer, who is commissioner for the Arkansas Department of Education. She quoted the governor's response or statement about lifting the mask mandate at the end of this month. But what he said very specifically was that the mask mandate was lifted for salons, athletic organizations, businesses, restaurants, et cetera. Did not say specifically that that exempted schools, and then went on to say that that all state offices would continue to practice social distancing and wearing a mask. And, you know, quite essentially, as a public charter school, as well as all public schools, we are a state agency. So Ivy Pfeiffer's response was, whatever happened on that day is still happening on Monday. We still wear masks, we still social distance, we still do deep cleaning at schools, and we still keep contact tracing in active activity for the school district. And so I feel like we're still on the same track that we were on until we have different information. And when Kara sent me that, that request, I was happy to forward to her that Ivy Pfeiffer had said, we're still on the same track that we've been on for the many, many months before this.
So no changes to the policy, yes?
No.
That's why, I agree, right? All right, so Mr. Young is not here, so I'm assuming that means David.
I have his report.
You got his report, okay?
He wanted, he actually sent it to me this afternoon, but I just got a text from him that asked me to read it for him. It said, all the spots are filled for next year. While the overall lottery numbers were down over the last couple of years, we did have the highest number of kindergarten siblings with 52 spots. We are conducting, isn't that awesome? We are conducting a serial drive this week with the Samaritan Community Center and would love to have each board member contribute to the drive. Chick-fil-A Spirit Night is tonight from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Pauline Whitaker location, and there is another Spirit Night on March 15th at Smash Burger in Bentonville. Plans for the Space Camp trip are being finalized for the fourth and fifth graders with their missions launching in April. And that is his report.
All right.
You know, I'd like to make a comment that I, I, at the end of the day, I got an email from several superintendents and principals saying, do you have any information about the reduction of enrollments in your school district? Because we're seeing a big decline in public schools in terms of participation for next year. And, and I was happy to, happy to say that even though we have fewer people on our waiting list, we have the, a really high number of people who are still interested in participating in the, in the Arkansas Arts Academy. And Heather and I have talked about sort of forward thinking, maybe it's backward thinking. I don't know what it is, Heather. But identifying among 10th graders, right, for this next year, a kind of a cohort of how we make sure that we have the highest number of participants in the junior and senior year that are coming forward here, so that rather than having spaces available, particularly at the senior level, is that we figure out what kind of programming is going to support those students who have high expectations for the Arkansas Arts Academy. Anything to say about that, Heather?
No, I just, I think we need to reach out to those kids and make sure that, one, I think there are some misconceptions about the kind of help that they can get as far as finding scholarships and taking A's and being ready. So making sure we address those misconceptions. And then, yeah, making sure that we have the programming available that they're interested in and want to take, especially higher level, specifically higher level arts classes.
Right, so I had a meeting with NWhac Community College to have a conversation about how we might be able to afford onsite at the high school, college-level prep courses as opposed to students going to them. And, and what are the other ways that we might be able to develop internships in junior and senior year that develop students' capacity for their future career development? So I'm kind of excited about this idea of 10th graders being part of a cohort that moves forward in that respect. So thanks, Heather.
I think that's great. You know, in my time with the, with the high school, since it started, we've always had that, that, oh, the openings in 12th and 11th grade, there's always been that drop-off for whatever reason. So it's great that you guys are addressing that because, you know, we need to keep it full. That's, that's great, like I said, that you're addressing this, this issue that's been around for a long time.
Yep, hey, Tony.
Yes.
Question. And Debbie or David, I don't know if you can answer this. When Matt is asking for support for that cereal drive through the Samaritan House, what is, what kind of support is he looking for?
Box cereal, family size. And the Samaritan House is the one that prepares all the snack packs for our kids at need, so they have weekend snacks. So we like to support their efforts.
Okay, so if we buy the cereal, where do we take it to or who do we deliver it to?
Elementary school, please.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so it looks like Heather, you're up.
Thank you. So junior students did indeed complete the ACT this morning, and 7th through 10th grade students will be completing ACT Aspire testing on April 5th through April 9th. Unlike the ACT, the ACT Aspire, we can do one or two tests a day instead of all four in a single setting, so it's not quite as exhausting for our 7th through 10th grade students. The theater department has just finished casting a spring production of Much to Do About Nothing. So looking forward to that. And our choir students will be performing for small family audiences this spring. And the dance department or Dance Ensemble Equilibrium is finishing filming their Cosmo Sheldon Drake Alice in Wonderland ballet, which will be a lot of fun to watch. We have five students who are currently participating in the Student Voice Program. They were actually supposed to be home tonight, but the director of the program asked them if they would stay to serve as examples of good student leadership for the next cohort of students who are coming in. So they're getting to stay for an extra two days to learn more about, from other students around the state and to serve as an example. We, our high school leadership team will be visiting Jasper High School to look at their flex schedule and how they use it to address remediation and enrichment for their students, looking at whether we can implement something similar here in the future. And then congratulations to our Teacher of the Month, James Hobbs Taber, and our Students of the Month, Diego Aguilar, A.J. Givens, and Sophia Pappas.
That's great. All right. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Wright? All good, all right. Well, then it looks like a student council is not here, am I correct?
That's correct. Diego is playing soccer.
Okay. Arts integration, that would fall to Mr. Jones.
Me, thank you. So, our arts integration for the month of March, very exciting. We will continue the My School, My Museum program, which is our partnership with Crystal Bridges Museum of American Art. Those programs are still to be discussed of what's gonna be happening. I did mention last month about the highlight of using dodecahedrons, polyhedrons. Want to show you a quick little example of what the students put together. How about that? Simple little piece using math and science together to then make, voila. Can you see the fancy little lights on it? Yeah, so area, perimeter, finding all this, and then using energy to illuminate. Very much like what you see as you drive into Crystal Bridges with people via Leo via Real. So tomorrow, it's gonna be Ms. Serna's Language Arts Class. Students are learning about stories, specifically moralizing tales from nursery rhymes, fairy tales, how those stories originated and have changed through time. So they're region, reading the original version of The Adventures of Pinocchio by Carlo Collidi, written in 1881, and are gonna be comparing it to the 1940 Disney version. Spoiler alert, in the original, Jiminy Cricket does not make it through. Sorry. So that's kind of what they're looking at, is why these things change, why they were written, why did the Grimm brothers then kind of take these things? And how do audience then kind of change them? And then they're gonna be making their own marionettes, so that'll be a lot of fun. Middle school, 7th grade, Ms. Colbreath's Geography Class. Students visited the Rogers Historical Museum to experience the current exhibition, Reflections of the Black Experience. Curator of the exhibition, Kenya Christian, actually came to the classes last week prior to their visit, kind of provides some contextualization, historical references, then they were able to kind of go to the exhibition. And what's really great is Kenya Christian is now getting the gallery, which is downtown Rogers, and her next iteration are going to feature these 7th grade kids' works of art as kind of a visual reflection of having that experience, which I'm really looking forward to. And then high school, as Ms. Wright just mentioned, Much to Do About Nothing coming up. So the tech theater are responsible for the sets, the costumes, and the masks. So they're gonna be making historical references and research and looking into those to make them all integrated and appropriate for what the production's going to be. And that's what we're doing on our campuses.
Not much.
Not much at all.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? All right, then we're gonna move on to special education. Scott? You're on mute.
Great. I really hate coming after Aaron because special education sounds so boring after Aaron gets done. And so the Special Education Department is continuing to grow and we're adding lots and lots of kids. And so we've grown over the year and we currently have the need to add an assistant for the special education classrooms. Because some of the classes were getting close to the limit for the numbers that they could have. So we had three really good applicants and we interviewed and we have come to a decision on one, and she's very fabulous. We had a committee of seven people and they interviewed the, the three people and unanimously, we came to the conclusion that she was our girl. So we're really excited to add her to our team. Like Rich said, we welcomed Sheila Rife on February 22nd, and she is amazing to our team here at the office. She is assisting in lots of different areas, but how she's helping me is with Medicaid documentation and Terry as well, because that's a big piece off of her plate, updating data for more accurate accounting with students and working on uniform data collection for the special education staff to ensure precise records for our kids. And we are continuing to wind down the stages of our corrective action plan. That's been a big thing for me this year, and the team has done a great job in listening to me gripe at them to make sure the paperwork's done right and all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So they've done a really fantastic job this year. So we're ready to start submitting our due process to the corrective action plan to the state, and we're almost done. Yay, so happy about that.
So when will this, when will this new person start? You need the assistant?
She is starting next week during virtual week, so she can do some training with Lori at the high school so that she doesn't come in, you know, with kids there, so she'll get a good dose of what Lori's expectations are before she shows up. But she is amazing and she's got some very fantastic goals in her future, and she's bringing her son along with her.
All right.
So excited about her son coming. She said, I've been trying to get him in there forever. I'm so excited. So we're excited for her to be here.
All right, that's great.
Add that the interview for the special education assistant was sort of a groundbreaking moment for us in the district in that I really wanted to make sure that parents were part of the interview process, and so we included parents as a part of the conversation for selecting the candidates, and it turned out to be a very positive, very positive effect for interviewing. So I'm hoping to include that for every, every candidate that comes forward to the district.
Cool, that's great. All right, human resources, Terry.
Hello. So as of today, for those employees that are currently on our payroll system, our 2021 salaries are $4,630,246. And the projected salary for '21, '22 is gonna be $4,855,842, which is a difference of $225,596. So that, the $225,596 is the salary step increases for next year, which is at about $44,918. And then all of those employees that were on a prorated salary schedule this year will move up to a full salary schedule next year. And that is about $180,677. So that's where the $225,596 difference is between the 2021 and the 2122 school year.
Yeah, so Howard had asked this question in the finance committee about Yeah. So Howard had asked this question in the Finance Committee about what is the investment for the step, step progress for teachers moving into next year? So the, the amount really is about $45,000, which is easily accommodatable. And the fact that we haven't had full contracts for this last school year means that we're moving forward for full contracts. And I don't have any, any reason to believe that the budget isn't going to be able to support that. So thank you, Howard, for asking the question. And here's your answer.
All right. Looks like we are to Athletics. David.
Good evening. It's good to be with you guys. I've been kind of out of the area the last three months and it kind of looks like I'm out of the area again. So, but, but, but it is good. Just to give you an update, our basketball season came to an end this past week in magazine. In the first round of the regional state tournament, we lost to a very good Acorn team who been on to, to the state tournament that is being held in Melbourne. We celebrate a very successful season, finishing third in our conference. Our program has grown tremendously over the past few years. Ben Vogel and Shireal Stanley were selected to the all-conference team. Updating our archery program, the elementary team finished 16th and our middle school finished 11th in the state. Liliana Green placed second and Erin Everhart was ninth. Quinn Bergson was 11th in the state. Our middle school team of Wal Thompson finished 7th and Logan Fogg finished 11th in the state. These shooters will go on. They also qualified for the Nationals to be held May the 3rd.
Will that be held virtually also or at school?
Yes, virtual here at our school.
Okay.
And our soccer boys, soccer team is opening their season tonight at Lifeway. Coach Kennedy is coaching that group. And just heard that they suffered a five to two loss.
Oh.
So.
All right. Well, thank you, David.
Questions?
Any questions? We good? We're good. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move on to new business board election. It's that time of year where we get ready to elect new board members. Richard, did you want to lead this? Do you want, how do you want to?
Sure. It's really just a matter of conversation with the board at this point because we're about a month out from having to make a real public announcement about the board election process. So I did produce a flyer that I shared with the board members that establishes what the parameters for board application and interest are. And we've had some lengthy discussions in the district office about at least proposing to the board that rather than filling positions, because we're really not a geographic charter public school, because we draw from the entire state of Arkansas, is that having individuals compete for a position actually sort of splits up the decision-making process. And we, we might have someone who applies for position one. And they compete with someone else who's applying for position one. And it's a feature of how many votes do they get? And then someone else applies for another position. And another person applies for that same position. They get split. And so the, the staff would like to recommend that rather than applying for positions, that people who are interested in being board members simply apply for vacancies. And so in the, in the larger sense, whoever are the top run candidates for the two vague, for the, for whatever vacancies are available, then we have the people that, that when parents vote, they're really voting for the top people that they think should be on the board rather than splitting the vote. So that's just a consideration from the board, which we don't have to have today. We could have that as a workshop or otherwise. But no matter what, sending out the invitation for people to apply needs to happen in early April so that the election can happen after that. And whatever procedure is made for deciding who the winners are can be decided by the board at a separate date. So I, I only open it for conversation and for perhaps a future, for future discussion. So that's, that's really my, my presentation at this.
I'm going to throw that out there to the board members. How do you feel about that?
I like that because whenever I ran, you had to put on your form. Do you want position one or position two? And you did not know who you were running against or how many people that would be. And what the year I ran, there were four people competing for one spot and two people competing for the other spot. And so we had six candidates, but it wasn't, it was kind of, yeah, nonsensical. So I think that's a great idea, just to not break it down into spots.
Howard, do you have any feelings? Jeff? Nate?
I totally agree with it. Makes sense.
I agree as well.
Okay. Well, it sounds like maybe we need to, do we want to change policy tonight? Do we want to wait till after this election? I'm throwing it there. And I do want to let everybody know that I have decided not to run for reelection. So my term will end in June. So after 13, 14 years on the board, I think it's time for me to let somebody else step up and do some of the work. So.
So sorry. That's, we deny that. Thank you.
I appreciate that, that sentiment.
Tony, may I ask a question?
Sure.
If we have two positions open and we have three or four candidates, how many votes would each voter have?
Well, that's a good question because the way we've always said it before was, you know, we, let's say we had two people, two positions. Everybody voted for those two positions, right? So here it sounds like the way this would have to work if we had, you know, two openings, we had four people running the top two, everybody would get one vote. And the top two would get theirs. Is that the way you're looking at it as far as, Richard, is that what you were thinking?
Exactly right. So it just, majority of voters select the two candidates, however many candidates.
Right. And as you know, we have very low turnouts in our elections. You know, I think the most we've ever had was like 120, 130 votes. So I, you know, I don't know, but I'm going to leave it up to those that are going to be running to make the proposal, if that's what they want to do. Since I'm stepping out, I don't want to be the one that makes that, you know, makes that proposal.
It, it does strike me that what you'll get is a kind of a plurality of people who think that these are the best candidates for the different positions. And we're not splitting the vote among, so I think it, I think it makes sense.
Do we, do, did somebody want to make their proposal, the proposal to change the policy? Or do we want to wait till after this election?
I'll make the proposal to, help me word it.
So that elections will no longer be by position, elections will be held for all the openings, the top, top vote getters will get the positions. So it's going to vary whether it's two, three, or four.
Perhaps someone can put that into better legal.
Yeah, can somebody, yeah, yeah, she'd word that better. Howard, you're usually good at wording things.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at the original. But I make a motion to accept the, the change to the voting policy to enable all positions to be equally open for voting.
There you go. That works. We got a first, I have a second.
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 We got a first and a second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. All right, it was passed and looks like starting with this election, it's going to be the majority wins as far as the votes go. Now, I would like to say something that, that the board's going to need to consider at some point. Deadness be done now, of course, or really anytime real soon. But as you know, last year, we had four new board members come on at once. And that's a big changeover. Usually we would do two, two, three. What happened was over the years, because of people resigning, various things, we ended up with four open acts. We had, we had a couple of resignations a year before last, and that put us with four openings. So something to consider is, do we want to do a draw straws and see who's going to stay a little bit longer? So that you could spread that out to a two, two, three type thing. Something to think about. So those of you that are going to be on the board after, after I leave is something to put out there to think about. So you don't have such a large turnover.
Who is it besides you, Tony? That's up.
Howard's up.
Really? Howard? So just two of you this year?
Yeah. And Howard, now we're actually supposed to be on it last year. So we would have had six. But we changed, we added that year. So we wouldn't have six new board members last year. Which would have just, that would have been six brand new board members would not have been a good thing, I don't think. All right. So anything else around the board elections?
Well, I just need to ask for personal and professional reasons. Howard, are you, are you saying publicly that you're stepping down because you've been here for 20 years? And gee, I only kind of need somebody with historical reference and I would pay you a dollar if you would stay.
Can I say undecided at the moment?
That'll do for now.
I think I beat Howard to the punch is what it was.
I mean, let, let me just say this about that. I want to do what's right for the school. And I, I need to have some conversations with myself around, around what I want to do. But at the end of the day, I want to do the right thing for the school. And if, if it, if it seems like it would be best for me to hang around a little while longer to help get others up to speed and more seasoned, I don't think I'm going to have a problem with that. But again, I need to have some conversations with myself.
And I just want to tell everybody the reason I'm resigning is my position has changed at work. Once COVID is over, I'll be traveling, traveling more. You know, around the US, South America, Central America. So I didn't want to be in a position where I could not attend the meetings on a regular basis. So that was the real deciding factor for me was with the role change and, and traveling more, I just felt like it was best.
Thank you, Tony, for your service.
All right. So let's move on to.
Tony?
Yes.
Katie apologized. She lost internet at her house. So that's why she had left the meeting.
I thought I would take it personal, but that's okay. All right. So code of ethics, employee and board code of ethics. Has everybody had a chance to review that? I looked at that this afternoon. I think it's probably clearer than, than things I've seen in the past. What's everybody think? Have a chance to review it?
So.
So I, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that I, I constructed this after some, some thinking, even when I first arrived here about codifying what are the expectations of the, the board, employees, and, and being expressive to parents and students and the community in general. So what I was trying to define in this draft document was this is how we conduct ourselves. And it's, it's a broader stroke. It's not saying, you know, these are the rules of engagement, but rather this is how we conduct ourselves as an organization. So it's, it's a draft for conversation and I'm happy to have the conversation take as long as it takes for it to unfold. So I'm sorry for interrupting, Carrot. Please go on.
No, that's okay. I was reading the attachments and I felt like it referred to an attachment I did not have. There was something, I only got the one document that was included in Debbie's original email. And I feel like it referred to some other things that I had not received. So I didn't know if I was the only person that had that issue.
Huh.
Everybody else get the, get everything.
It's a. I think I did.
It's a six-page document. Is that right, Debbie? There it is.
The, the attachment around the Board of Ethics, Code of Ethics with six pages titled Attachment Number Six. One of pages one through six.
I had a chance to review it. I didn't see any problems with it.
You didn't see anything missing?
I tell you what, since, let's do this. This is my, go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I was done.
Maybe we need to table this till the next board session, give everybody a chance to spend more time looking at it. And since we have a couple of board members not here, that might be a good thing for, to give them a chance to have input if needed. So, Richard, I'm going to ask that if you would resend this to everybody and just ask them to review, just to make sure everybody has it, has a chance to review for the next board meeting. And then we'll just put it back on the, on the agenda next month.
Well, I think that's timely because if we're going to put forward the elections for new board members, this is a perfect opportunity to publish that document.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah.
All right. I guess everybody.
Mr. Burrows?
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Will the, will the staff be part of the review process of the Code of Ethics? And also, how will this line up with the state teacher's code of ethics that the Department of Ed has?
Yeah. So two things there. I did send it to both principals and so they have it in their hands and I hope that they will share it with staff for their review. Two, it's probably more specific than things that come from the state or otherwise, or from others proprietary organizations. I think the things that I was most concerned about is that we were very specific about donations or gifts or conduct and behavior. And so even among our own staff in the district offices, it was a very clarifying discussion to say, so, so can, can a vendor buy us lunch? No, I mean, that's not appropriate. So we just want to make sure that the conduct of the organization is as scrupulous as, as can be. And so I, I'll encourage tomorrow when I send it back around to both Matt and to Heather to share it with staff and others for their comments as well. So thank you, David.
All right. Any other discussion around that? Everybody okay with moving to next month? All right. All right. Well, then the next thing we have, and I think this is where Victor might have some things to say, is around the Cox Wide Area Network Proposal. So changing our contract, basically.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll sort of like prep Victor, who has the most specific information here, is that in the process of looking at the E-Rate subsidies for how we develop this work for the district, and it's, it's a pretty good deal from E-Rate in that they supply 50% of the cost. And, and our current provider for service is up. And so we had the opportunity and Victor brought forward to me an opportunity for a three or a five-year contract. And Jeff was so clear in his conversation in our Finance Committee stating that, you know, as, as these electronic and internet costs, costs continue to drop, do we want to have a three-year contract so that we can engage ourselves in a, a potentially better profile for cost? Or do we want to lock in something for five years because we're worried that things might not be what we predict? So I don't know, Victor, if that was a good intro or a bad intro. So, you know, go.
No, that's great. Very good. I appreciate that, Richard. That really helps clear it up and makes my presentation quicker. Um, so, you know, Cox Internet has been our provider. Um, so Co, you know, Cox Internet has been our provider of inter-building connectivity. In other words, we get our internet service to the K-6 building, but we have to get that service extended to the high school and to the admin building. So we've been, we've been with Cox for the past three years. And we've been also contracted under them under E-Rate. So we get that service for a 50% discount. Um, so that contract was getting, is, uh, expiring this year. Uh, so as part of the E-Rate process, I bid out to multiple vendors. Uh, we got two vendors to return, uh, RFPs. Cox was one of them. Another company called Vero Fiber, um, also gave us a bid. Um, in looking at those two bids, the Vero Fiber was more expensive than what we pay now. And the terms of that contract were pretty much the same. Um, so based on that, uh, and, and our good experience with Cox in that network, we've not had any downtime in the last three years between the buildings. Uh, we decided that, uh, it makes sense to go with Cox. So again, they, they gave us a three-year, uh, quote and a five-year quote. Uh, in looking at it, in looking at the amount of money and the attachment that I, uh, gave to the board, uh, shows this. And looking at the amount of money per month that Cox would, would, is proposing now versus what we pay. Um, you know, it's a, it's about, at full price is $311 a month cheaper. Um, at five years contract, it's $546. So it is cheaper at five years. But if we go with three years, you know, they may come down another $300. Again, you know, if we, if we, I think the best idea is to go with the three-year contract because that will keep us, um, that'll be kind of the sweet point where we won't be locked into a higher price than we'd get, you know, five years from now. I hope that makes sense.
Um, so what was our current contract? What was the year on our years, number of years on our current contract?
The current contract is a three-year contract. Uh, we paid $2,700. Well, we actually paid $1,353 a month with the discount. Um, full price is 2,706. The new three-year contract they quoted is 2395, which is $311 a month cheaper or discounted, uh, 1198. Um, if you look at the five-year contract, they wanted to charge us 2160 a month. So it's only a couple hundred dollars a month cheaper. Um, but that would still lock us in for five months or five years, excuse me. I think it makes sense to go with three years. I think that'll keep us much more flexible. And that's what I'm asking the board to consider is, as a proposal.
Yeah, I think the, uh, important, uh, consideration here is that, uh, we want to have fixed costs so that we can anticipate what's, uh, coming forward. And if we have an understanding that we're going to get a cheaper deal at three, uh, three years, uh, with the potential of it being even less after we renegotiate that, that's maybe a more positive place than locking ourselves into five years and watching, uh, prices drop, but, uh, contractually obligated for a price that, uh, is no longer competitive. Um, so, uh, uh, my grandmother used to say, don't ever go shopping just because there's a sale.
One other thing to add, um, the pricing I'm giving in this proposal is actually for an increased amount of capacity.
Yes.
Um, the internet, uh, the state of Arkansas provides our internet service, and they are increasing its speed by 700%. It is.
Oh.
Yeah. We're going from 250 megabits per second to two gigabits per second coming into the K-6. We've only had one gig pipe to the, to the high school. So this quote for the new contract, three-year or five-year, is for a two-gigabit pipe between those buildings and 500 megabits to admin. That way our video conferencing of these board meetings will not jitter and shake. If you notice, it's probably a bit better today because we're actually operating at a higher speed right now.
Hmm.
Um, the, so this will keep us in line and prevent us from having any bottlenecks, you know, between the schools, which is most important.
I think there was one other conversation which Howard brought up in the Finance Committee was, uh, you know, Howard being the, uh, longest memory of the organization. Oh, let's talk about the tornado.
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
And the effect of the, uh, internet being down for, was it a week, Victor?
Yeah, yeah. And, and that, that stemmed from, as I explained in the Finance Committee meeting, that stemmed from the fact that we lost power to the K-6 building. Um, we still had the connectivity where between buildings that we're talking about. But being that we had no power at K-6, it didn't matter, you know? That, that, that's a, this particular contract addresses one need. Um, it doesn't address, you know, getting power to the K-6 if we're out of power.
Understanding that to be true is that, uh, it, I'm, I'm sure that wasn't the last tornado that's going to come through Arkansas. Um, and, and that many others were, uh, disadvantaged by that particular experience. And so it's much cheaper to think about having the, uh, primary, uh, uh, electronic sources come into someplace like the high school rather than the elementary school, which is a low profile because it will be more secure. And that's not going to cost millions of dollars. That will be a feature of just making sure that the place that our, uh, uh, internet, uh, uh, access comes, comes into a place that is a little larger and a little more safe, uh, than the, uh, elementary school. So I, I think in the long term, uh, and I would recommend this, that the three-year contract seems to be the, the best opportunity for us at this point. And we're still going to be paying less and will be paying less for a very prescribed point of time. So.
All right.
And, and that actual, um, moving that too would be, it won't affect this one way or another. Um, that it's good, but it is something we should look at. I agree.
Yeah. It's really an architectural, uh, situation, not really a service problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Tony, back to you, it would be whether or not you think this is something that, uh, the board can approve so we can move forward. It, the, Victor, we're under a kind of a timeline for E-Rate. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, we really need to, uh, we have a filing deadline for this, towards the end of this month. So we were hoping we were getting an approval to this board meeting.
Yeah. So does, uh, any of the board members have any questions for Vic or Rich around this? It looks like to me that three years the way to go. We're not locking ourselves in for too long. We're getting a better deal than what we have now, and maybe an opportunity to save even more money in the future. So that sounds like the, uh, way for, for us to go. But if anybody else has anything they'd like to say.
No, I agree. I think that's the way to go in this particular case. The savings is not overwhelming enough to, uh, to
Yeah.
tie your hands for two more additional years. They, you know, vendors, you know, vendors come and go in this space where you can have a, you know, Comcast or something else that pops into a market and that challenges it. Um, so I, I think it's smart not to tie your hands necessarily.
All right. Anybody else? Uh, then I will entertain a motion to accept the proposal of accepting the new Cox three-year contract as presented.
So may.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Hey, we got a first and a second. Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Eyes have it, motion passed. Well, we do not need to have, oh, do we have anything else since the publication of the agenda? Well, good. All right. No need to go into executive session this time. Uh, so with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any further discussion about adjournment? All right. With all those in favor adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Eyes have it. We are now adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful evening and, uh, stay safe out there and, and enjoy the upcoming spring. Bye-bye.